Good evening. Good evening. I'm glad we have a great crowd tonight. Lots of great topics.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It's good to see so many small students. I appreciate that. So I'll go ahead and call the meetings to order. Can you stand for the question?
...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, invisible with a routine of justice.
Mrs. Delwiler. Mr. Hooly. Here. McCartney. Here. Mr. Botol. Here. Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Let's take a silent prayer meditation. Thank you. Hey, can I get a motion to approve the December 9th, 2024 agenda?
Thank you.
Your call.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Botol.
Yes.
Mrs. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler.
Yes.
Mr. Crabb.
Moving on to section three is the intent. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 12 regular and November 26 work session? Discussion.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Botol.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on to section four, super top of the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Well, I'm excited for you and the board this evening. Everything that we're going to be sharing tonight just aligns with our elevation and our training work over the last few years. Our athletic director, Mr. Hooly, he's going to be recognizing our fall athletes, accepts from our fall programs. I also asked Mr. Hooly this evening, we've been having conversations for the past couple of years about elevating that athletics department and what experiences our athletes and our families have. So, Mr. Hooly, after you recognize your fall athlete, you can go into a big picture vision, throw up some visuals for the board for you to see some ideas that we have down the road for our athletics department. I'm excited to hear from Principal Walter, his staff and students here at Canaan. They've been working on a project for the courtyard. We're going to bring students up before the board. They have some demos for the board and we're going to hear from them about ideas of how they can improve this courtyard area. And I want to emphasize to the board, what Mr. Hooly is doing, what Mr. Walter and our Canaan students, it all aligns with the work that we're doing to facilitate our facilities for our students and our families moving forward. And the board has an extremely important decision to make this evening on master facilities. And I wanted to comment, especially with all of our community and students that's here, because sometimes when we have our we have our presentations and commendations, we're so glad that our students and parents are here. Sometimes people will trickle out because it's dinnertime. And the board has a big decision to make on master facilities and how it impacts our students and families across the district. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to share now what the board will be making a decision on here within the next couple of hours. And I invite you to stick around and even possibly engage in the conversation if you will. So the reason this decision, the board has such a significant decision is it affects all of our students for decades and decades of teaching and learning. The master facility planning process didn't start this fall. It hasn't been going on for four months. The master facility planning process has been going on for 18 months. Back in July of 2023, the district started creating the teams. There's a steering committee, a financial advisory committee, an educational visionary committee, and a community advisory team meeting that I'm going to refer to as the CAC. The steering teams, they met last fall for 18 months consistently and faithfully every month to talk about the future of this district. But the conversations went on on a weekly basis between Steve Hammond, architects and engineers, Mr. Botol, Mr. McCartney, and all the board members about how can we prepare and plan for the future. So the beautiful part about this entire 18-month process is this community advisory team who met through some rigorous meetings these last four months, the planning and the processing and the collaboration. They came down to two master facility plans. Now, if this community advisory team, who consists of over six community members, came up with two different master facility plans, we would have a problem tonight. Because that means we have community members that are passionate about one direction or another. So the beautiful piece about this is it's two identical master facility planning pieces for moving forward. It's just about where the junior high will be placed. So I wanted to share the difference in these. Option A2++ will be an addition at the current high school. And option B, the same concept constructed behind the junior high. All other plans are the same, the same grade band structure, the same number of building transitions. And they voted that the junior high would be a sixth and a seventh and an eighth grade. We have several guests with us this evening who played a role in that community advisory team meeting. And Mrs. Walker has allowed us to shift what our public participation looks like. When we're having discussions, when the board's having discussions about master facilities, we will invite those that want to comment on anything that they would like with master facility for the op 24. However, I would like to leave all the comments for that master facility discussion when you're ready to vote now at this time. And I would like to move into commendations with your permission and then presentations. Sure. All right, I'm actually going to hand it over to Mr. Ingles because he's going to recognize Mr. Williamson. And then I'm going to call up Mr. Hooly to recognize our athletes. Mr. Hooly's going to give a short presentation on the future of the athletic department. And then I'm going to call on Mr. Walter to come up and introduce his staff and students. Mr. Ingles.
Mr. Williamson. I'm, uh, coming up. So Mr. Williamson is in a different position tonight. He is being recognized. As you may know, Mr. Williamson is a reporter for the Marysville Journal Tribune. I always want to say Times, apologize. Based on his excellent reporting and faithful reporting of our school district, I'm pleased to announce that he has been recognized as a member of the Ohio School Board Association Media Honor Roll for 2024. And as such, we do have a resolution. I'd like to read and present to him a certificate and as well as a copy of the OSBA's quarterly publication. Whereas in each community, the public schools are shaped by that community to provide the most appropriate and effective education for the school children who attend those schools. And whereas public schools are dependent upon the community's support in countless ways, including support and setting goals for the education of our children, and establishing successful volunteer and loser programs at the schools, for funding of facilities and operations, and then the election of qualified school board members. And whereas much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools depend on responsible reporting by local news media representatives, who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues, and what the tone of the reporting will be. Therefore, now be it resolved that the Jonathan Alder Local School District Board of Education needs Michael Williamson to the 2024 OSBA Media Honor Roll, calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on the community's public schools. We express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the staff and students. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child who attends them. Thank you very much.
Um, I don't know if everybody knows this. Mr. Williamson comes to every board meeting and takes diligent notes. And after the board meetings, I'm always holding my breath a little bit to see what the paper says. I have never been disappointed. He has always fairly accurately and neutrally represented when this happens at the board meeting, which is why we nominated you and we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hooly. Mr. Hooly. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here to recognize our fall sports athletes at the end of each season. We have a large list of student athletes that receive everything from league honors to regional honors, district honors, state honors, academic awards, you name it. And we choose that, we give a list of all those kids that are being recognized. But at the board meeting, we bring forward and recognize any of our kids that have state level achievements. So these athletes that we're going to recognize tonight are all state level achievements or receive all Ohio awards. The first one I'm going to talk about is not able to be here with us tonight. She actually has practice with our club team. So the first athlete that we want to recognize is Ally Hayes. Ally Hayes was a member of our volleyball team this year as a junior. This year was her second time being named All-Ohio. Last year she was named All-Ohio as an honorable mention selection, and this year she was a 13th selection. She's two-time been named First Team All-Central District. She's also twice been named First Team All-Central Buckeye Conference. She's obviously a huge leader on our team, who this year went 17-7. Had some huge wins along the way, including Molotengi Highland, Bishop Fennlinke, and Notre Dame Academy. Her stats have been incredible. I'll just go quickly over her career. She has 859 kills in her career, 530 digs, and 93 aces. And I say the digs and aces from the aspect of she's an all-around player. Plays a front row player, plays six rotations, plays in the back row. She's just a really good athlete. She's currently available to, sorry, to Wright State. But she's still got her senior season coming up next year. So look forward to having her back. And just want to quickly give a round of applause for her. Our next athlete is Fabrizio Fiorini. Him and Coach McMurial here, so I asked them to come up. So just a little bit about Fabrizio. Last year, his junior season was Fabrizio's first year with our team, with their school district, with their program. And obviously, I don't think it took very long to realize what an impact he was able to have on the soccer field, just quickly seeing him play. Throughout his career, he's been twice named All-Ohio. This year was his second time being named that. Last year was a second teamer, and this year was a second team selection as a first teamer. He was second team in 2023. He's also two times been First Team All-Central District, two times been CBC Player of the Year, two times been First Team All-CBC, and this year was his first time being named Central District Player of the Year. In addition to that, just talking to Coach McMurial a little bit about him. Fabrizio's only been with us two years. A mark in your career as a soccer player is when you can score 100 points in a career. In order to score 100 points in a career, you give one point for an assist, two points for a goal. So just to give a quick estimate of that, just this season, he had 23 goals and nine assists. And in his career, he reached the 100-point mark and did that in only two seasons. So a lot of people, it will take four years to get 100 points in their career, but he did that in two years. A huge leader on our soccer team. This year, they were 17-2-1, lost in the district finals to Waterston, which was a great game. It was overtime. For those of you that get a chance to see championship soccer, once you get to that level, going to overtime and sudden death, it's just the first thing to score, wins the game. But most recently, I want to also say Fabrizio received an All-Region Award. And then actually, it was just yesterday, we got an email saying that he's also been named to the All-Americans. The way that works, you take, everything is a tiered selection. So you take your top kids in your conference, and they move forward to receive district awards, from district to state, your top kids in the state to region, and your top kids in the region to receive an All-American Award. So that's, it's been pretty amazing watching him throughout his career and being on a big part of it, just watching him grow as a player. He will be graduating this year. But that being said, he's already been involved with the, it's called Crew Two, which would be the Columbus Crews, basically like their minor league program or their feeder system. And there, he's been involved with them now. They're kind of on a break, and they will start back up in the spring. And their season will start like March, April, May, rolling there. So we're really keeping our fingers crossed and wishing for the best for him. That one of our, one of our students will be an opportunity to play professional soccer. So congratulations to Fabrizio and Coach McMurial. Have a great season, have a great player, and be named All-State. Congratulations.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Okay, our next group is our girls cross-country team. My good echoes, young ladies come up. So as you can tell, a lot of these young ladies just take it for practice. So we will talk about that here in a minute because I was doing the mileage from how far it is from the school to here. And I'm hoping to rain here with a secret. So anyway, there's no secret to why they are so successful. Like I said, I was just leaving the school 25 minutes ago, and the boys are out running, putting the work in, which is why they achieve the success they do, are able to get to the level they get to. These young ladies in front of you today, just quickly to go through team members. Kayla Greiner, who's a senior. Lauren Wink, who's a senior. Ella Lucre is a junior. Addison Ranley is a junior. Lexie Beasley, junior. Cal Strait is a junior. Cara Curtis, a sophomore. Marie Gray, who's a freshman. I'd like to say congratulations to these eight ladies. They've had an incredible run, but I say that from the aspect of I know it's not over and I know next year they'll be right back there doing it again. Throughout their career, they have won five straight CBC championships. They have won four straight district championships. And to put those two in perspective, this group of seniors has never lost to CBC and has never lost to district. So pretty impressive run throughout their career. In addition to that, in the regional meet, they were third place. And then this year in the state meet, they finished eighth, which is the best finish that we've ever had in school history. So a huge congratulations to them. On the bottom of the information sheet, I'm not going to go through all of these, but there is a lot of individual accolades for these young ladies from All-Ohio to All-Region, to All-Central District, to First Team All-League, Second Team All-League, to Academic All-Ohio. Just quickly, I would like to say, every single one of them either received First or Second Team All-League, and every single one of them were Academic All-Ohio and were All-District. So to not only do it on the course, but to also be so successful in the classroom is an incredible mark, but I think it also just shows, again, the work ethic and the time put in. So again, to Coach Krebs, who's practicing with our other group right now in the weight room with them, and to our girls cross-country team for their state appearance, again, I'd like to just say congratulations to them.
All right, here we go. And three, two, one. Perfect.
Okay, our boys cross-country team. So while the guys are coming forward, in case anybody was wondering, it's exactly 2.3 miles from the high school to here. So if they would have ran here, they'd have made it in about 11, 12 minutes. I say that from the aspect of, just looking back at this group, one thing I would like to say, both groups are record-setting groups, both in what they do as a team, but then individually. One mark that occurred this year, we're going to talk a little bit about records here a little bit. Throughout the season, Lincoln Wilson at one of the meets this year ran a 15:46, which is 15 minutes and 46 seconds, and that's a 3.1-mile course, which is a school record for us. We talk about records, the breaking records, and both of these groups have just done amazing things. Talk a little bit about the group here. I have with us Greg Newsbaum, who's a senior, Mason Hermiller, who is also a senior, Chase Gray, a senior, Lincoln Wilson, who's a junior, Mark Good is a junior, and Darrell Junior, Noah Thompson, a junior, and Brandon Engel, who's a freshman. Much like the girls, these guys have had, again, an incredible season. And I say again, from the aspect of this is their fifth straight CBC championship. So again, another group of seniors who have never lost a CBC's championship throughout their career. In addition to that, they've won the district championship twice. They, in the regional meet this season, finished fifth, and then the state meet finished 14th place overall. So again, just another incredible year by this group of young men. Again, their individual accomplishments are in front of you that are listed on the document. But just a few quick things. Six guys on this team are all CBC, five are all district, and again, five academic All-Ohio athletes. So again, just another incredible run. I wish Coach Krebs could be here with them to also receive their recognition as well. And again, there's, as I was leaving, they were running. There's no secret to why it happens. It's the time put in, the hours that they work, both classroom and on the course. So again, just like I said, congratulations to our boys cross-country team for reaching the state tournament and finishing 14th this year.
Okay, here we go. And three, two, one. Perfect.
So to our families that are here that were recognized, I don't want anybody to, I'll get a little bit of time to get this set up for your presentation. You, I told you guys this, you do not have to stay for the entire meeting. So I want to say thank you for being here, to all of our athletes for being recognized. You're welcome to say, again, as Dr. Villas said at the beginning, I want to thank you guys. Thanks for taking time out of your night to be here to do that. As I'm setting this up, you guys are welcome to do it. So thank you. Thank you. If any of you want to move, you'll see a screen to. Okay, um, just to talk a little bit about, I guess, why, I guess, why I'm here to talk a little bit about this, for the reasoning. Dr. Villas and I have talked for some time about, again, as we're talking about our athletes' records, accomplishments, the way to recognize, the way to recognize alumni, people who have been a part of Jonathan Alder forever. And so that said, as we talk about those things, he was saying to me, I think you have some great ideas that I relayed to him, that Mr. Hayes and I talked about, Mr. Clark and I talked about. He's like, but I think it would be valuable for other people to know what the plan is or where your ideas are. Because a lot of times, ideas are something that, you know, maybe we have an idea of where we're trying to drive the bus or what we're trying to do, but everybody else doesn't understand that same thing. So I don't want to take forever with this, but I do just want to quickly, just want to kind of like what our thoughts are, where we're at as far as our recognition of our athletes. So again, this is more just like our plan, our direction, and our process. The areas I'm going to talk about are all the areas where we enter the gym. Those are areas that are secure, there's cameras, people see it, they're in and out. It's huge for more than just sports. There's also sorts of different activities that are in that area. But that's why, as we look into those areas. First thing here, just talking about kind of the where we like to go. This is the area that you see when you first walk in. And the changes we'd like to make, I'll show here in just a minute, but just makes it an area where you walk in and you feel like you quickly recognize something different. You quickly recognize, and I say that because I think you should walk into Jonathan Alder and recognize there's something different about this place, there's something different about how it operates. So some of the changes we'd like to do is just making that area where it'd be more functional, have way more things for us to be able to utilize the area for. You can see on one side, we've got a media backdrop that we can use, whether it be from pictures like we just took, college signings, athlete of the month, a teacher recognition, a new hire, a music event that we're trying to take a picture of this group or that group, just a media backdrop that will be there to be able to use all the time. And then the rest of the area is just really, just to be able to dress it up. So again, just trying to create an area that hits your first impression. You walk in and you immediately see, wow, this is neat, this is very well done. But again, it'll be functional, it'll be classy, elegant, impressive, inviting, and really just a sustainable way to be able to recognize our athletes, alumni from now and beyond. Again, the media backdrop, I guess, is one of the big things we want to do in that area, just so it's able to be used for a lot of different functions and a lot of different activities without having to set it up. This is what it currently looks like as you start to go down the hall. And what we'd like to change that is to be able to use the hallway to recognize our accomplishments that happen in those areas, being our accomplishments that happened in the gym, the oxygen with the work and the time we just talked about, these kids right here that were here this evening, a lot of them were in the weight room, they're in all those areas. They're going to go by it, they're going to see it, and people doing the same thing in games. So when we talk Hall of Champions, one of the things, or some of the things we want to try to recognize is just, I'll be real honest with you, right now, we have four district trophies that were just won this fall that do not fit into our trophy case. To me, those are important things to display, right? There are certain levels of things that's like, there are things that people walk into a building and immediately go like, wow, these guys are pretty, these guys are pretty good. So again, expanding the trophy case for state, district, regional conference, displaying individual records, displaying team photos, creating a Hall of Fame, something that we don't currently have. And then again, as we talk through the ninth, state placers, All-Ohio recognitions, and then the stuff that currently have 12 seasons in our feeder board. There's the Hall, as we currently look at it, the changes we'd like to make. And I really, at this point, just kind of want you to focus mostly on the right side, and then we'll talk about the rest. But expanding the trophy cases, right now, there's nine state trophies in there. You're only going to get those if you win it or you're runner-up. I believe 13 is the number that we actually have, and some of you say, well, where are the others? Well, our bowling team is one, does one state trophy. Well, our bowling team is one, does one state trophies, and those are the bowling alley, in different areas. But I go back to, until we're able to expand and have more space, you know, for me coming in and being new to the district, in the first few years, it wasn't something that there wasn't the space to go move, right? So it made the most sense to say, let's work on the space, and then we can move stuff where it can be displayed. So the plan of expanding the trophy cases would be to create a first one that would give us the opportunity to display state-level trophies, and then the middle one that's currently there for district and regional-level trophies. And then last but not least, the one for very even, be able to display conference-level trophies. Currently, all of those are not even in that area. Those are all up at the main entrance in a trophy case that's also shared with music. Again, doing things like this would provide more space for them to also be able to utilize areas like that as well. But that would be our plan or our goal with the trophy cases. This being said, Dr. Miller and I have talked about this, and this is one of the things that we're working toward, trying to move forward with. The sun is at least in the trophy case portion of it. As we look at the end of the hall, there's what the end of the hall looks like as far as adding that trophy case. Then we just expand out from what's there. So as far as fire codes and things like that, it's no wider than what's already there with the current little trophy case that's there in place. As you look at the other side of the wall, we also want to acknowledge not just team accomplishments, but individual accomplishments. We talk about things like records, record boards, state placers, team pictures, different things like that. So one of the first things we'd like to do is try to put in a digital touchscreen. And you may say, why a digital touchscreen? Well, space is a little bit of the issue. If you tried to start to recognize all of the sports, which we want, we don't want to do some and not all, as you go down that hallway, space will become a big issue with individual groups. Whereas a digital touchscreen will allow us to continually keep it updated. It'll be able to be updated right when things happen. It'll be able to be interactive. It can have all sorts of records, it can have team records, it can have individual records, it can have photos, it can hold class information. You could go down there and search the class of 1965 and pull up their class roster, their pictures, different things like that. It can run video. It will just be something that will draw attention as you first go into that area. And in addition, like I said, it's a space saver, it's continually updated, and it's engaging. In addition to that, by doing that, as you go a little bit further down, we'll be able to put in boards, we'd like to put in boards that will recognize state qualifiers. Currently, when you walk in, I have people all the time who get confused from the aspect, all the pictures across the top are all first-team, All-Ohio pictures for state champions, is all those pictures are. So for example, if you're a track athlete, you can go tennis, you can go golf, it can be cross-country. Any of the individual sports where a kid may make it to that level but doesn't win it, you're not going to seek any recognition of that kid getting that. So we may have a kid that's second, you know, just a few years ago, Drew Dampier was second in state bowling. He was a state runner-up. This would give us an opportunity to be able to have a plate to recognize him for that accomplishment, and keep what we already do as far as the same process. So again, that's adding record boards that would do second-team All-Ohio, third-team All-Ohio, honorable mention. And then also, anyone that makes the state podium. Could be the same with relay teams, different groups like that, that would just have a plate to be able to recognize them. And like I said, currently, it's first-teamers are the ones that are up there. As we go a little bit further down the hallway, like to actually get to the point to do a Hall of Fame. This is one of those things that, and again, all of these things do take a great deal of work, right? So I think doing this, again, with a plan and a purpose and a process, we can save and allow space to be able to add and do things with that. But the Hall of Fame would be something that would take some time to be able to develop, you know, a criteria, a committee, a process, a selection, a nomination, a lot of different things to be able to do that. But again, just allow a space for us to recognize some of the great athletes, teams, coaches, support staff, people that have been a part of programs for a long, long time in the district. As we go a little bit further down, like to maintain and keep an idea of team photos. One of the things with the team photos, I think that's important, is when you go in the gym, you see some of the changes we've made with the state of Ohio's and things like that. Some of those teams that have a state of Ohio might be a state champion, or a state runner-up, or whatever. We currently have an undefeated board, which is fantastic. However, there might be a team that won the state championship and lost two games for three years, or four games. And there's not any picture or anything to recognize them. One of the things I like about team recognition is there's a lot of people that would be in that picture who would be a part of that organization, that may never be a first-teamer, or a second-teamer, or an all-conference player, or even a local selection. It allows them, their kids, their family, to be able to come in and say, hey, mom, dad, grandma, grandpa, whoever was a part of that team. So those pictures would be the state of Ohio's that we have in the gym. As we go a little bit further down... Did I just disconnect or not?
I think it's the title. Rob knows me too well.
Oh, there we go. I'm not a corner, Rob, thank you. Anyways, you go a little bit further down the hall, I think it's also important to acknowledge what we already have. Anytime you take things down, the first thing people come in and say is, where did, fill in the blank, go, right? So I think keeping undefeated seasons, keeping the 12 seasons awards are both important things for us to be able to have, because they are great accomplishments, and they are neat things for us to have. So again, just in closing, this is what we'd like to do. Dr. Miller and I have had a discussion about this, and I think more than anything, we're not here to say we need this, or we need that, just wanting you to see the process, the why, the way we're going, the way to do it, the way to go about. So again, our vision, our plan, our procedure, and our process. We're planning to start on the trophy case this summer. In addition to that, we've already started talking about the entrance. We've been utilizing, I think, big spaces and stuff like that to do decals, stuff like that to go to add that, so we can keep it cost-efficient, and keep it easy to be able to do. And then we'll begin to work on the left side of the hallway, but then we'll begin to then evolve to the right side of the hallway, and again, with records and different things like that. I'm going to go back just quickly to the touchscreen. One of the things I think that's a positive with something like that is you can add it and only put into what you have. So then when you have people come in and say, I'm over here looking at this touchscreen and I can't find your boys' golf records. Well, we don't have those. Currently, when we have those, we'll add them in. And I'm not saying that we don't have boys' golf records, I'm just using that as an example. It'll allow us to continually be able to expand and have those things. In addition to that, let's be honest, the games change, right? Like, there's records that were in the 60s before a three-point line, now there is a three-point line. Or hand timing versus now automated timing. So as things change, it'll allow us to be able to change with the virtual history. So again, just in closing, this is kind of our game plan of what we like to do, and I think it'll change the look and what we have as you have in that area. Any questions?
Mr. Rule, you've clearly put a lot of work into this.
Well, hold on, I have to say, I didn't appreciate Ms. Kersey, but also it's very... I told her I would not forget to mention her. Her and I spend a lot of time together, yes. But no, she's done a great job working with us.
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Rule. You know, we've had multiple conversations, and obviously, I can't translate what his vision is, when he was explaining to me. I can't message that the way I want to to the board, so... And this is another prime example for the board, whenever I ask a principal or a director, "Hey, can you put something together for me so I can properly communicate this to the board?" I ask for five minutes, just explain what the big picture is, and this is what Scott comes up with, so... Just another, thank you, Scott, for leading and elevating your department.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
All right, as they get set up, one just to share tonight, it's an exciting night, lots of exciting things. Talking of masterpieces, to some of our awesome projects, our students are going to present. Ahead of the planning process, we discussed kind of timeframe, and Dr. Miller shared that you're rules going to present first. And I was also super excited about that. Mr. Rule does a fantastic job. He said I was going to present in 15 minutes, and I've never seen Mr. Rule present in under 15 minutes. I've still never seen Mr. Rule. But he did a fantastic job. But in all seriousness, I've had, again, in talking about what do we want to present, what do we want to talk about, we discuss a lot of how do we create positive experiences for students. And that sometimes takes a lot of outside-the-box thinking. When you ask people to think outside the box, a lot of like, oh, that's, like, how are we going to pull that off? You're going to see some pretty cool outside-the-box thinking from our students. What you're not going to see tonight is the process that leads to... And I want to share a little bit about that before we have our students up here and our staff, because when you ask people to do that... I've been in districts and had experiences where it's a lot of, it's a lot of work to get people to work with, to come along inside you to do those things. And here's the difference, it actually makes this a, it makes this a place, an awesome place to be, because you're going to hear it, or see it, or maybe not, but you're going to see where I... I talked to Mrs. Byers, I think she's here, back there, a couple years ago, and said, "I would love to see our courtyard look different than it does." Okay, that's what I thought. And then a partnership with AWS, and we have the kind of blank teams that we have right now. You're going to see filled up with some student ideas, Jordan. It comes to the, Dr. Miller talked about, kind of this, it all fits together, the envisioning process. We worked through that with our staff, our staff envisioning meeting was the time where the conversation was, "Yeah, if you could build a lesson, open that lesson," and staff jumped in and they built a lesson. And then Mrs. Byers comes up and says, "Hey, can we do that lesson?" "Sure." And I stepped out of the way, and this is what happens. Again, it's amazing how much effort you really don't have to put in for people to go above and beyond and create those positive student experiences. I called, I'd say quite a few students, quite a few students to see, hey, would you guys be willing, quite a few parents, would you guys be willing to come in and present to the board? I didn't tell how many people they're going to present to, but when I talked to the parents, I talked to the students, not a single one said, not a single parent said, no, can't make that happen. Not a single student said, don't know how to do that. They all just said, sure. So kind of the part you don't see is just, again, how amazing our staff and our students are. And just the beauty is, when it comes to trying to create positive experiences, the answer is, sure. Just jump right in, let's do this. So you're about to see some pretty cool experiences.
Hey!
I've rammed it on long enough that that could not...
Good job, you know that.
So, at this point, just like before, I'm going to hand this over to, going to hand this over to Mrs. What?
We'll send them in. Okay, so like Mr. Walter said, this courtyard project started from an idea that when we were in a late summer, early fall, summer PG, with the Educational Vision Committee. And they asked us to create a unit or a lesson that got kids really involved with all different subject areas, for it to be cross-curricular, and then to use the areas that they had identified as what were important for our older students. So we decided that we were going to take this and run with it and see what we could do to help make our courtyard better. So here is their problem. This is what the courtyard looked like before summer, at the beginning of summer. And we have an incredible outdoor space, but it wasn't very functional, and the kids never really used it. So we wanted to make this a better place. And that started with Mr. Walter getting artificial turf, and that came over the summer. And so that was a great start. Just visually, it looks amazing, so it got us all excited about what can we do next. So students became the architects of the courtyard, deciding what features should be included. And instead of just all of this being on the staff and the adults in the building, we really created a way for students to take ownership and decide what they want in the process. So you're going to hear from three different groups tonight about what they want the courtyard to look like. And then from there, we'll take these ideas and start implementing.
I want to remind you guys that we also, like, this was an afternoon enrichment project, but it was also in collaboration with our Think Big Seen classes. So just a reminder that we told kids to think big, we gave them creative license, and when they said, is that going to work? We said, we don't know. Will it work? And so just a reminder that we encourage kids to think big in this project. Before we start, the calls are for first group.
All right, Brady, Alana, Ari, and Maddie.
Your life.
I don't keep credit, I need credit.
Hello, we were part of the course of many days, now we present our courtyard project.
I'm Alana.
I'm Brady.
I'm Ari.
I'm Maddie.
And we want to make the courtyard perfect for years to come.
Problems. Classes OT is being stuck inside the same room all the time. Also, the courtyard has so much potential and tons of space, but nobody uses it without equipment.
This is our blueprint, fills the rooms with ideas. We have a variety of activities for any classroom. You can collaborate different classes together, or take one class out, whichever you choose. We have tons of reindeer print out there, and we have picnic tables to run on, a comfy cabin area to hang the banner. We have a long turf area with the basketball, and it's an easy place to do fitness, if you're outdoors, and any other activities. We have storage for all classes, and we also have a fountain for the sound of the evening. Thank you.
This is our prototype. Basically, what we want our courtyard to look like is for all activities. We want a comfy and welcoming environment where everyone can fit in and be welcome. No matter in class or at home, you learn, we have everything for you. Some include our meeting area, or maybe your sports. We have a dedicated sports area. We have plenty of greenery too. Thank you.
Items. We have a shed to store stuff, the basketball room, the smooth floor, and for, to use it for floor space. We also have a couple of picnic tables for seating. And actually, we have a computer for under the pergola. Then we have fountains and pergains for decoration. A supply of ball rack to store stuff in.
This is the shed that we chose. It's eight by six feet, and it costs $540. And we really want one of them. And we're going to use this for extra storage for bigger items, like green seeds, cushions, and deep backs. We're going to remember.
This is the basketball room. It costs, in the backboard of the room, it costs $40. Who wants one of them? Perimeter came in good outside. If it's a good day outside, put on a basketball and get a pergain.
This is our floor. It costs $59.99 for each pack of them, and we want two packs. We want them so we can have a nice, upyelling, other than big turf. Also, we can use them for the basketball hoop area, so you can actually dance the ball.
This is our table. It's $229 for one. We want six. It's for people to be able to sit down and learn from different assignments while enjoying the afternoon.
This is our fountain, and for one, it costs $39.97. If we want it for decor, also, you can use it as a water source, and steam, you can use it to load the irrigation system, and science can use it to test out the water.
The furniture. It's decor and green, we make them all.
These are our comfy seats. They are $223.30 for one, and we want, we'd like to have four of them. These are meant for a comfy place to read or relax.
Percolator. We want one percolator, that's eight hundred and thirteen. It's for a bed covering from the rain, and can be used to sit and let keep that comfy seats. This came from a lovely evening, but they also...
This is our ball rack, and it's $98.80, if you'd like one of that. And you can use this to store extra food, stuff like basketballs and exercise balls.
This is our timeline. In the first year, we add the bigger stuff, like a covered pergola, a shed, flooring, picnic table, and trees. Our second year, we buy the smaller stuff, we put in our basketball room, seeds, ball rack, and fountain. On our third to fourth year, we decorate the courtyard starting with the bigger stuff.
This is our educational effects from the courtyard. And of course, we have the add education as this is a school. The fountain is not only used for scenery, but also steam can load the irrigation system. Science can help learn about plants or rocks. The fitness area can help you become more healthy and fit, instead of your eyes glued onto a bench. Thank you for listening and hearing out all our ideas for the courtyard. Thank you for listening and hearing out all our ideas for the courtyard. I hope you all have a wonderful rest.
All right, Kara, Thea, and Joseph.
Hello, thank you all for coming here today. Hello, thank you all for coming here today to give us the opportunity to show our courtyard project at Keenan Middle School. My name is Kara Dyer and I'd like to introduce you to my team.
Yeah, and Joseph.
All of us will explain the details to you today about our courtyard presentation. We are presenting a courtyard improvement proposal within our budget of five hundred dollars per year. This project will use empty space and allow students to enjoy the learning environment. Next, I'll transition to Thea.
My name is Thea Ballmer. I'd like to explain the problem. Keenan Middle School had a courtyard that was made with turf and made with. We wanted to make it more fun for kids. There was no equipment out there, so we wanted to come up with something. Next, I'll transition to Joseph.
My name is Joseph Mitchell. I'm going to explain the blueprint. Bottom left image is the courtyard for the, from Google Earth. Right image is the detailed blueprint for our proposal. We arranged the area to have a garden, bench, book cart, shed, and a basketball room and general supplies. Next, I will transition to Kara.
I believe since we can purchase it, a bench would be used for reading books and talking to friends. We can purchase one bench for seventy-nine dollars and twenty-six cents at Walmart. Next, I'll transition to Thea.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A book cart will be used to arrange books and stuff supplies. We can purchase one book cart for eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents at Walmart. Next, I will transition to Dawn.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. Dodgeballs and basketballs will be used for dodgeball, basketball games and other gym-related activities. We can purchase two packs of dodgeballs for sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents and ten basketballs for twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. We can get the dodgeballs at Walmart and the basketballs at sports facilities. Next, I will translate to Kara.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A shed will be used to store supplies of items for training or just a small base. We need proof. We can purchase one shed for three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents at Tractor Supply Company. Next, I'll transition to Kara.
Oh, I like this. I agree. I think the court is wiggly, guys. Keep talking. It'll, it'll work.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A portable whiteboard on wheels. We would use it for teachers to teach kids and students to teach each other. We can purchase one whiteboard at Target for one hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Next, I will transition to Dawn.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A trash can will be used for storing gym balls. We can buy one trash can at Walmart for nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Next, I will translate, transition to Kara.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A basketball hoop would be fun for kids to play basketball in different. We need to play it, uh, play with it in gym class. And it is also portable. We can buy one basketball hoop on Amazon for thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Next, I'll transition to Thea.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A garden on wheels would be fun for kids to use in step classes and to have fun growing. It can get one off of Amazon, but it's free from donation. Next, I will transition to Joseph.
I'd like to explain another purchase item. A real cover will be useful because we could use it for the book cart when it's raining and also the whiteboard. We can buy two real covers on Amazon. The thirteen said fifteen dollars because the price depends on the size of the whiteboard and the size of the book cart. Next, I will transition to Kara.
This is our book. The valuable thing is to show the literature and see. We've also started to set out a cardboard, plastic shaws, and paper as an inexpensive tool to show our project. Listen on the left side is all the supplies and materials we need to learn. On the right side of this, items teachers can donate to the project. Next, I will transition to Joseph.
Shown is the project timeline over five pages. If you can approve this now, we can get this started in winter and have an opening and spirit. Next, I will transition to Kara.
Today, we explained our proposal design. Our year seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cents in our first year. And three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents in the second year for the courtyard project. Our budget limits five hundred dollars from here, under five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Based on this proposal, I hope you can see adding to this to improve our learning environment. Thank you for your time.
Hadley, Melly.
Good evening, my name is Hadley Glesby.
And I'm Hadley Glesby. We're sixth graders at Keenan Middle School and we're excited to share a wish that could benefit our entire school community. And our goal for the courtyard is to create a safe space that can accommodate many different classes but still giving the same experience they receive in a regular classroom. We also want to make it waterproof, be able to hold maximum amount of cool space which is easy to be in a regular classroom. Teachers and students alike will be able to get the best out of this space. It's important that this area has the right elements to support multiple classes effectively. As it currently, as it currently stands, the courtyard falls below the expectations for effective use by multiple classes. Problem. The problem is that we have a beautiful space outside that we should be able to use. But to be able to use it, it needs to have the correct attributes to host several different classes. It should be able to accommodate all central core classes along with fitness and other special, specials, such as library and steam. As of now, the courtyard cannot meet these expectations. Although we have a gym in the school, having these different items in the courtyard that can relate to gym or fitness will make the courtyard more useful to all special classes. We can also add things for teachers to be able to bring their kids out to read and to work. That way, the courtyard is open and useful for everyone. Here are some visuals of our blueprint where we carefully documented all the measurements. We have some hammocks, mini fitness rooms, the shed, garden beds, and all that stuff fits properly where. This image provides a representation of a prototype we have created. This will require tables, chairs, storage units, and additional items. This image shows the tables that we have found. They fit into our budget and they're the right size. These tables will be used so that the students will have a place to write and use for classes. These chairs are another item to add to the courtyard. They come in packs of ten. Uh, they're pretty small and they're full holes, so they can easily be stored in the shed. This is, this modern water-safe shed that is sold by Walmart and will let us store items that will be used in the courtyard, such as chairs and tables. To add greenery to the space, we want to add metal raised garden beds. And I think they're going to be donated, but I'm not for sure. Another addition to the courtyard that would be benefic, beneficial to, to students is feedback chairs. They will give students an option of relaxed learning. This portable whiteboard will give teachers the same tool that they would have in a regular classroom. Will be able to be stored in the shed and brought out when needed. These fitness trampolines can be used for gym class or a regular class to help students get some energy out before they go back inside. Next, I have a stand-up hammock which will give students a comfortable spot to sit and while learning. We want to suggest four and. With the five hundred dollar, dollar budget we had for each year, we had constructed a simple plan and went to purchase items. In year one, we will be purchasing tables, chairs, and the shed. In year two, we will get the garden beds and feedback chairs. And in year three, we will get a mini fitness room and a hammock. With the simple plan, in year one, our total will be four hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. In year two, our total will be three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. And in year three, it'll be four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents. And our grand total will be one hundred, no, one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Thank you so much for taking your time today, watch this presentation, and I hope you consider some of our ideas for the courtyard. We wish you a great evening and happy holidays.
You have all the prototypes set up down in the library, so you're more than welcome to walk around and check out other people's ideas. Guys, you did a great job. Just really proud of yourselves.
A couple things to close in. And to continue the whole conversation of people just wanting to say, "Sure, let's try this." Mrs. Glesby had the idea of maybe make this, this lesson plan work. And asked Mr. Clapp, can you, Mrs. Rags, "Hey, hey, you want to collaborate and do this together with the grad degree classes?" And their response was, "Sure, how we going to do this? Let's make it work." Do you continue that? There's a huge word being tonight and, uh, I think it goes out to Central Office. We have several Central Office staff members and community members join us today to listen to all the class presentations during the day. So again, just another example of someone says, "Hey, listen," and judge, not judge, but listen, provide feedback to our presentations. And Dr. Miller was sitting there, Mrs. Quip was sitting there, and they said, "Sure, what am I going to do? Sign yeah." So again, makes this place a super special place to be. Huge thank you to our students for presenting outstanding job. For, for wanting to create this positive experiences for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, all the students. Thank you for all your work on the project. You guys did a great job. Also, thank you for presenting today, kind of a cool and nerve-wracking, and really impressed everybody all of us, right? That, um, your presentation was great. So, thank you very much. Oh, okay. So next, I think the board is seven. It's time for public presentation. This is Dan by, hold on, because you're trying to deal with. And we have Claire El, uh, El Dorado.
Hold on, please.
Did this nerve Wrecking It? It's a time to solve the problem here.
Choose mine.
I feel like I have to say, it's very my year and this is an opportunity to kind of talk to you about it. I'm here representing, to say, by the church, um, which is one of the best for them, kind of, you know, members. Uh, we've been here for quite some time, we've had a long relationship with the school district over the years. And until the kids ended up moving to the new location, uh, we kind of lost contact with the school after that. But, uh, the relationship was shared, pardon, states that was there that we had shared with the school district for over forty plus years, as well as the playground, which is now no longer there. But the, uh, Plank City Council had sent us a letter letting us know about the proposal that's going to be for that man. And we just wanted to let you guys know that we were still there and we're still active and, um, glad we can continue. Um, at least the park area that we have shared over the years for our services as well as the community services. But that's pretty much all I wanted to let you guys know. For further conversations regarding the proposal, what's going to help us in that area. Just kind of letting you know that we're there and we're, we're interested in seeing how things are going to, um, go. But that's all I wanted to say.
Right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to section eight for Chargers report. I have a motion to approve the November twenty twenty-four record for this event.
So, um, do you want to point out that we have given our monthly management course a different bracelet? Reason for that is trying to provide different ways of showing the same information as we always have been. Utilizing more graphs, more colors, trying to make it more accessible for the general public. And board knows I do most of these every month on our website. So it's all the same information as I have been presenting. I just broke out the revenue comparisons from current fiscal year to last fiscal year and expenses. And I do have the actual numbers below that as well, so you guys still see the change from year to year. So comments about any specific changes? And I also added a table showing our beginning balance of the beginning fiscal year, our year-to-date receipts, expenditures, can show how we got to the final fund balance at the end of the month, as well as projected remaining budget. So for this one, we came in, spent about forty percent of our, our budget, five months. We played five months of fiscal year, so we're just a little under budget, forty-one point two percent is the total for the fiscal year at this point in time, so overall, we're, uh, at least a strong month. We're, we're staying on budget. We stay on track with our projections and, uh, overall pretty good, bud.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Thank you for explaining, explained the, um, sorry, what was it? I appreciate that you added explanation for like, because sometimes I think, oh, that went up or that went down. I wonder why. And you explained this, so thank you so much.
Zero.
Roll call.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. Rotop.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Dutt Liler.
Yes.
Much passes.
Moving on to eighty-one point two, I have a motion to approve, uh, or accept the following writs. Eleven sixty-six fifty-two from the Black Ball Bean Fund to the John Holler's Junior High School for volleyball polls. Seventy-five dollars to Plank City Elementary, Amy Baker, from the Daughters of American Revolution for student supplies. And thirty-five dollars to, um, Mineral Elementary School from Daughters of American Revolution for student supplies. Discussion, comments? I'm going to say thank you very much for the donations. Roll call.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rotop.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mrs. Dutt Liler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Section nine, Mr. Carter, turn off for the change report.
Well, you have my report in front of you, but a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. The enrollment opened on Thursday for the application process. This passed through the, for the application process for our students for Level One. And that application quarter will remain open until hardly fifteen Junior Day, which is the twentieth. So for anybody that, anybody watching, if there are students interested in attending, please have them apply. Current enrollment is a hundred, uh, one thousand fifty-five students, uh, which is pretty exciting. We're still gearing up, uh, still finalizing plans for the low construction, pre-nursing, and early childhood education additions that groundbreaking should be spring of this coming year with the, with this big completion date in October of twenty-six. I just got back from a, uh, the, little over half of the twelve board went to a, to San Antonio for a career tech convention. And so we are beginning to think about what the, what new programs we can offer with the additional space that we're going to be bringing up in polls. So a lot going on, a lot of exciting things happening.
Great. Moving on to section ten. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel consent items in ten point oh-one resignations, ten point oh-two employment, and ten point oh-three leave of absence? Any discussions or additions? Okay, ready to roll call?
Mr. Hooly, yes. Mr. McCartney, yes. Mr. Votop, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, section eleven. Can I get a motion to approve the event change in the overnight process request? I'd already, the trips themselves had already been approved, this is just a time change?
A change with one term and a similar, you have date and place.
Okay, okay. Uh, can I get a motion?
Seven. Second.
All right, any discussion?
Following up with.
We're set.
Okay, good.
For safety procedures.
Safety procedures, yeah. Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
Roll call. Mr. McCartney, yes. Mr. Votop, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Mr. Hooly, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to section eleven point oh-two. Can I get a motion to approve the corrections to board policy five four three oh point oh-one regarding graduation recommendations?
Second.
I, I read this like four times, and I still, I don't know what the.
There is, there is no change with the work that took place last year. It's the same concept. It's the same idea with a top student is our auditorium, and our second student is a school auditorium. This policy doesn't take place or affect current students, it's incoming freshmen, freshmen that are right now. So once we started looking into the system on how you change this compensation, I went to the board docs, and I saw an error with how you calculate GPAs for honors courses. And it's just, was a typo. Probably all the conversations I reported would be in the board, would be in Neola. It wasn't input into board docs correctly, and we caught that plenty early enough. So that's all it is, is just a correction, but not change in what we did agree upon for the policy.
Right, okay. So for the freshman class, will there be more availability to work if it was based on a, um, a combination of four point oh and four point five scale?
Four point oh for regular classes, four point five for honors, and five point oh for AP and CCP core.
Great, okay. So, any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Votop, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Mr. Hooly, yes. Mr. McCartney, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to section twelve, new business. Can I get a motion to authorize the superintendent treasurer to terminate the agreement with the Madison County Educational Service Center and effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and enter into an agreement with the ESC of Central Ohio effective July first, twenty twenty-five?
Seven.
Mrs. Walker, I just want to make a comment on this. No one has done anything wrong on why we're taking a different direction with the ESC. This is an opportunity as we grow and we raise our expectations and standards for our district. We want to be able to provide or at least have access to more services. And just to give you an example, last year, when we wanted to elevate our department and our EL, Madison Shantler wasn't able to give us that support, but ESC of Central Ohio was. That's just an example that they have more tools and more people for us to get our hands on so that they can help us support the work that we're trying to do. It won't cost the district more, and I'm not asking to spend more, it's just different and more accessible.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Mr. Hooly, yes. Mrs. McCartney, yes. Mr. Votop, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Section twelve point oh-two. Can I get a motion to approve the out-of-state trip, which would be returning the same day for the JA Harmony, or the Acapella Group, who has been, who have been listed as an ICHSA committee member? We can talk about that further. Can I get a motion to be with?
Seven.
Second, okay. Um, do you want to address this?
Mr. Rades is with us. If you guys remember the work that we did last year, he transitioned the show choir to the acapella group. And I sent something to the board a couple weeks ago of just the rehearsal that's going on. They're just sounding incredible, and now look, one of your first competitions you are placing. And now here's an opportunity for you to travel and compete, and showcase our students and return the same day.
Uh, yes. So basically, this is the ICHSA, which is kind of the governing board of the national acapella, I guess, groups. This is a great honor, because this is not just a like quarterfinal for Ohio, this is a quarterfinal for our region, like Midwest region. So we'll be going to An Arbor, Michigan, competing with all other Michigan schools, mind you, and for the chance to go to the semifinals nationally. So it's quite an amazing opportunity. I believe so.
Are you going to somewhere?
Yeah, okay, that will, that will happen.
Congratulations.
It's awesome.
It's awesome.
You'll have to plant a flag.
You know, that seemed to not work well. And then the occasion started.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Votop, yes. Mr. McCartney, of course. Mr. Hooly, yes. Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to section twelve point oh-three. Can I get a motion to approve the administrative guideline policy directions as presented?
Seven. Second.
So, I'll just stress this real quickly. The policy committee would, um, there's a lot of policies, there's a lot of references to administrative guidelines, and those administrative guidelines actually don't exist. I think when Neola gives us recommendations for policies, it's in the past, they've had it built into the language, and it just gets adopted in our policies, and we don't have the guidelines in place for all of those policies. We do have some, and we're adding them as we need them now. But any reference to them in the board policy, if they don't actually exist, we just want to take the reference out. So it's a technical change, which is why it does require two meetings.
Well, adding as the administrative guidelines is bound to cover those rules, it's not necessary to reference the administrative guidelines in the policy.
Right, if we don't have an administrative guideline, it shouldn't be referenced in the policy. If we need an administrative guideline, we will start adding them as we go. And those are, they're becoming apparent as we go.
Right.
Just a blanket, you know, having a bunch of administrative guidelines for the sake of administrative guidelines is kind of pointless. We'll add them as we need them. Yeah, but we just want to take the reference out of it.
So there's some that are staying, the references are staying for some that exist.
Exactly.
There are a lot of them.
Yeah.
Some districts operate all or none, so there's an AG that aligns with every policy. It's just kind of blanket, some policy, or some districts operate with just policy and zero AGs. And I think the way we're doing it is the best. We'll put the AGs in place when we need them, but not have the policy reference AG that we don't have in place.
And Turner? Roll call.
Mr. Hooly, yes. Mr. McCartney, yes. Mr. Votop, yes. Mrs. Walker, yes. Mrs. Delwiler, yes. Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to section twelve point oh-four, the master facility plan. Can I get a motion to approve the master facility plan as presented?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would like to address the board. What a significant decision the board has to make this evening, and I wanted to start with this. Together as a united families, we have an opportunity to elevate our school district by investing in new facilities that will support all students' growth and ensure a brighter future for our Jonathan Arter generations to come. What the board has before you is a proposal to consider after eighteen months of thoughtful planning and collaboration. Last Thursday, December fifth, the community advisory team involving over sixty community members are part of the CAT. Over fifty were at Thursday's meeting. It was a very powerful meeting. Beautiful piece about this entire process, the CAT landed on identical facility plans. And I tried to express this earlier on during my announcements. It would be a much bigger problem if we had a community that was split, one wanted a direction one way, and someone else, or community members, wanted to division a different way. But we have two identical plans, same grade and structure, same number of building transitions, and the CAT quoted on a junior high with grades six, seventh, and eighth grade. The only difference in plans are the location of the junior high. Option A two plus plus will be in addition to the current high school site. Option B, same concept, same costs, similar costs, constructed behind the current junior high. Also listed here for the board are locally funded initiatives, which include, these are all in front of you. Plan B, cost breakdown with and without an auditorium. Monroe, envisioning classroom upgrade. Plain City, envisioning classroom upgrade. Canaan Middle School, envisioning classroom upgrade. Canaan Middle School, four additional classrooms. Jonathan Arter High School, eight additional classrooms. With auditorium, eighty-two point six million. Without auditorium, seventy point six million. Plan A two plus plus, cost breakdown with and without auditorium. This also includes same LFI's. Monroe, envisioning upgrade. Plain City and Canaan, envisioning classroom upgrades. This also includes a junior high stadium. If this junior high is placed at the high school site, we definitely want to spend a little bit of money on the athletic pull of junior high. Take down that stadium, improve those athletic areas for practice fields. This plan with the auditorium is eighty-two point five million, or seventy point five without the auditorium. On Friday, I sent a survey to the entire CAT with one question, and I want to read that to you this evening. After this process, will you be in full support of the final proposal that is approved by the Board of Education? And as of today, at three P M., over ninety, ninety-four percent of that team voted yes. I'd like to share with you a couple comments from that survey on Friday. I sent a survey out, and I included the board. You know, the meeting went three and a half hours, and, you know, some people left with, uh, it was a lot of information, information overload, where did we land, how did it end up? And there were still some questions that I think were unanswered, so Mark and Carla and I crafted a survey and sent that out on Friday. And most importantly, we wanted to know, when you walk out of this CAT meeting, we had two great plans. Fifty-one percent wanted one plan, forty-nine percent wanted the other plan. When you walk out, is that forty-nine percent, did you, did you lose? Or did you walk out and you both are going to support two good plans? It might not be your number one, but you support both plans. Because we started with ten facility plans. Through that process, we added two and three along the way, and we ended with two great plans. But we still walked out of the CAT with two plans. So what we sent to that committee was, after this process, will you be in full support of the final proposal that is approved by the Board of Education? And at three o'clock today, over ninety-four percent said yes. I want to read you a couple comments. The discussion at last night's meeting, we're referring to last Thursday, was amazing. It was encouraging to hear us work through thoughts and concerns. Thank you for the opportunity to take part in such an exciting and pivotal experience. I feel the process to determine building options was conducted professionally and thoroughly. All member input was heard and considered. I feel confident that there, that either of the two final options will serve the district well. I enjoyed this process and learned a lot throughout the meetings. I will be prepared to fully support and advocate for the plan that is decided on. The treasurer and I recommend to the board that you approve a funding amount tonight in order for Mr. Ingles to make all necessary filings with Cattell Estate and the Howard Part of Education workforce for May twenty twenty-five, for our initiative. This will allow us the necessary time to determine the best place we could build a junior high. Mrs. Quick did a great job of analyzing some of the responses. I, I think that maybe we lean into that if we need to, and we have a discussion, and Mark and I will do as we can to answer questions.
Okay, just to be clear, tonight, we are approving a funding amount.
That is my, that is my recommendation.
Okay, and the community advisory team, one plan, the A two plus plus, was the top plan, but by a very narrow margin of correction. There are some concerns, and it's my understanding that with that A two plus plus, we're going to do a little bit more work to figure out the feasibility of it. Traffic.
That, that is correct. That's what I've sent with Josh, and want to have some exercises with our building principals, you know. Some, some may feel that being on the same campus outweighs a new junior high being at the old junior high space. But is it outweigh so much where there's some conflicts, confusion, confusions, or logistical concerns that we're not thinking about? So that's why I wanted a little bit more time. If you approve a funding amount that can get us either of one of those two plans, we'll be able to put together a plan for the board where the junior high should go.
And the cost of these plans is virtually identical to the.
The only difference is fifty thousand dollars, and that really comes down to is the junior high work. As option B, that's included in the base cost, and A two plus plus is not. So this really comes down to, and that's literally pennies, for a hundred thousand dollar valuation.
So we're going to prove a dollar amount tonight, and soon, we will know whether or not the elementary school is going to be attached to the high school or put on, I'm not sorry, the elementary, the junior high. Where the junior high is going to go.
The board essentially is going to be voting for a new building.
Right.
It's just where it's going to be.
Right, but everything else about these plans is the same, meaning that Canaan will get a four classroom addition. The high school will get an eight classroom addition. The only X factor is where the junior high goes. Okay. And we wanted, instead of just approving the number one, tonight, let's take a pause. Let's figure out we can do that, and do it well or right, or if we can't, we'll go with the number two plan, which was option B. Does that have the plan written down?
Right.
Okay, but what we do have to do tonight is approve a dollar amount. Okay. So, um, we, now, that, that takes to the second stage. The dollar amount is dependent on, um, the base cost with or without the auditorium. And according to the master plan options and estimated costs, either A two or B, base cost in Millage, would cost homeowners one ninety-six, approximately one ninety-seven per one hundred thousand dollar home value. Okay, so a four hundred thousand dollar home would be approximately eight hundred dollars additional per year. That's with, that's without the auditorium. With the auditorium, the cost goes up to two twenty-nine, two thirty, approximately two thirty, um, per one hundred thousand. Which means?
Nine hundred and twenty dollars for a four hundred thousand dollar house.
Thank you, Mark.
We try that.
Great. Great, okay, so. What do you guys want to talk about?
Can I, I'm sorry to interject. I just promised someone here that I'd allow you, Mr. Mayes, has another job this evening. He's playing the piano for someone. And he was here to make a public comment, and I said that Mrs. Walker, the board, would allow you to comment on this auditorium piece. He needs to leave.
Yeah, go for it. Let's hear it. We want to hear it.
Sorry.
Mr. Jess, he might, he might want that.
Go ahead. Sure. So, basically, throughout the past few days, Mr. Kennedy and myself have been going over what was the best thing to say to the board. Obviously, we are both, going to be here to be, you know, overwhelmed in support for the arts. I mean, that is our position, and it's what we have spent years to do. And just before I, you know, get any questions about just the auditorium or the existing spaces, I want to say that over my past seven years and going into eight years, I took on this job at Jonathan Alder because I grew up in kind of a smaller community. And what I had found in that time is that there is something truly special about our students. And there's something really, really special about our music students. These students come in day in, day out, and they put in work that, when I talk to my colleagues at other schools, it is not only comparable, but beyond what some are doing. They are making strides in just sound, but also just creating a family. A student told me last year that this is where he wants to be. This is his family. And one of the things I would like the board to consider is that really that's what this comes down to. I know on the surface, this looks like the performing arts thing. But this comes down to community and what it can do for our community and our family, as we like to say, if we are a Jonathan Alder. Logistically, some of the things that we do in our current space is we hold six high school and junior high choir concerts, five high school and junior high band concerts, give or take, a friends and family night, a Jonathan Alder Music Festival or Jam Fest, the Fall Play for four separate nights, the Spring Musical for four separate nights, full graduation, many guest speakers, staff gatherings. And what I can tell you from my conversations with people who have auditoriums is that these spaces are not only used to elevate the arts, to elevate performing arts, but to elevate the community and give it a place to commute. I would like the board to think about where in our community, this wonderful community that I have now called home for eight years, do we commute? Where do we have community theater productions? Where could we have a combined music department concert? Or even a graduation, if rain, you know, airs its ugly head? An award ceremony, a Veterans Day ceremony, our various speakers throughout the Columbus community? Community gatherings for celebrations, additional concerts, debates, classroom workshops, panel discussions, rehearsals, community movie screenings, in-school concerts, guest musicians, dance recitals, and even board meetings. This is what this space can do. It looks like a massive number, and it really is. And it is going to make waves among our students. I know it will. I know it can elevate us to that next level of performance. But it's also going to elevate our students to be future-ready in these skills where they are performing, where they are speaking in front of people, and where they are celebrating as family. So, without further ado, if there are any questions, I guess, about auditoriums or auditorium awards?
Yeah, I'd add one question. When you hold your music, the auditorium, how many people are in there right now? Because it's always packed, so how many people would be in there for a member event?
Counting, so if we're just counting audience members, musicians?
No, just audience members, like the capacity. I think we're talking about, what, eight hundred, ten, auditorium?
Get some figures on that unless you already know. Oh. So you know how the auditorium has the different levels?
Yep.
If you do three rows, which is comfortable, that would be four hundred max. But if you jammed it and did four rows on each level, it would be five hundred twelve.
So we currently have capacity for five hundred?
Uncomfortable.
And this is a proposal for eight hundred?
And then could you, first of all, great job, both you guys. Great job on rolling the program, building the community, the love that the kids have for each other, the passion they have for it. Fantastic. Can you give us a flavor of how many students are involved or many would benefit from this? We'd be very excited to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. In the music department alone, I know the band is close to.
Yeah, like three seventy-five to a fourth of a hundred.
Three seventy-five, so that's including Canaan all the way to the high school.
That's opposed to COVID, that's the COVID.
But I'll leave some quick there real quick.
It's a little smaller than it used to be, but it's growing.
Yeah, we're about, about.
Three, three fifty.
I don't know, because Canaan's one sixty and the high school's seventy-five. Yeah, I'd say it'd be fifty to four hundred. But yeah, I mean, the numbers keep coming up because we have our senior class this year's time, and we have ninety in the grade because it's just from the COVID. But yeah, prior to COVID, we were rocking a hundred and thirty-five in the high school band.
But also at the choir side of things, we don't go all the way down to Canaan, but we do go from the junior high seventh grade to twelve. We have, including our musical program, about two hundred and fifty, maybe a little more involved in that. And that's including any kids that are involved in technical work that we teach them or any students who we teach, like construction sort of skills when we're building sets. We also have quite a few music students at the elementaries as well. So it's very worth noting that a lot of communities use these spaces for their, you know, their elementary music concerts, those sorts of things. Because, you know, it breaks a lot of hair.
You say two fifty for the performance?
Yeah. You were saying.
So I don't know. Did? So it's no secret our community's exploding in growth. It's not a trick question. If we build it, I don't want to build it too small. Is it eight hundred your estimation? Adequate, given we have always grown to be near beyond the cusp of.
I think one of the things we need to think about is not only, you know, are we servicing eight hundred people every time we have a musical? Or are we, when we bring a wonderful guest speaker, can we fit enough high schoolers in an auditorium? If we, if we have some of these community events, you know, can we oust the school? Could we oust graduation? Those two things are, I think, also keep in mind, so.
Yeah, I got to speak to that real quick just because it's been on my mind ever since I've opened the weekend. I thought a lot about this. So, for a lot of years. But recently, we had Chris missing on it. And incredible story about the first person with Down syndrome, played in Ironman, and subsequently just decided to do the top six marathons in the world because, as one does, you know. Very, very exceptional story and such a great speaker. And we had all of the school in the biggest room we could, and that was in a high school gym exam. And it was extraordinary, extraordinary presentation. But because a high school gym is not designed for sound and because it's designed for sport and because of the limitations of the speaker, it was very hard to understand. And I was very compassionate about that. All our education foundation brought that presentation to us. But I think some of the students weren't equipped to understand all the communication differences. And I think it was lost on some of them. And I remember saying, before I gave this to the things, I remember saying, I think, gosh, just had an auditorium. And that person was above us, and they could see a multi-view presentation. They could clearly understand because you have a sound system that fully works at its full capacity, it's designed for the space. I think that that could bring so much more to the district. It's not just about band, choir, musical, and playing hits. This is about the whole district. And this is, we talk about elevating us to the next level. You know, anybody who looks at our campus, we have extraordinary sports comp by South Bank. We're the India at CVC. I was all the other band directors, and they're like, your stadium is our favorite competition club. And the marching band has definitely benefited from that. Having those gyms is exceptional. Like during COVID, that's where we rehearsed every day because we needed a space to hang up. We were very fortunate to have them. But when you look at what we could have, this is an opportunity to really exceed that mark for our kids. And, you know, I've worked here, like I clearly have thought about this all week. And I'm like, you know, it's not about what I get to do every day. It's about having the opportunity to show our kids the fullness of sex. And I think that this is an exceptional opportunity that we can potentially take advantage of. And I'm so passionate about it. Because we also, to next point, we create a place where all kids, regardless of their limitations, can be. I mean, I have students with learning exceptionalities that do band, and you would never know on a Friday night what a challenge it is for them because we accommodate the maintenance successful. And that is for five nights a year in our stadium. And I just think, what about the other six months? If they had an actual stage to get on each time? If they had the ability to fully realize their artistic talent and for their families to come in and actually see, you know, this performance that they're in, be immersed in? My favorite comment as an educator is, I forgot that my child was performing because it was that moving, or that exceptional. And when you're in the room of the school where they were below these sandwiches three hours before, it takes a little bit of that magic away. You're in the room where the side is open, it's the hallway, and of course, as hot as you are now screaming like my nephew does. You know, that's just what happens. It takes you out of that. And so this is our chance to elevate everyone to a new level of being, a new level of being within this place. And I don't want to miss that. And I'm very passionate about it, you can't help. So, and I think it's worth noting too, you know, I have a great friend. He mentions, you know, stage fright is a big thing for adults. You know, tonight, some of us mentioned self, self speaking stuff. How are you supposed to ever have a student get off stage fright if he can't actually be on the stage? You know, this is not just about band choir, this is about speech, this is about debate, this is about presenting. You know, I told somebody else today, when you see, you know, we have all different ideas and want to prepare our students for. When you see these companies and their CEOs doing mass media presentations, they're in the auditorium, talking with the presentation behind them. And they have that experience that they can create, and this is what that allows them to do. And I think that thinking globally about this, beyond just the arts, is important. Because we want to give people a reason. And this is a very attractive reason for many of our students. I also said earlier, I totally want this part to people that believes in signs, right? And I think last year was one sign where we had graduation, and thanks to Megan Marling being an excellent reader with Perpetition, you're able to get through all the names, and five minutes later, the heavens opened up and it's more. And there was a story, one, there was a rooster, so I was like, oh my gosh, what's going on? You know, because I put there afterwards. And then the other sign that I can't, I didn't realize this morning, is due our calendar in September for the whole year, for the following year. And this year, May eighth, the date of the official vote, is on the date of our next grand concert. And, you know, I remember beginning to realize that and I messaged five days, and this is a problem that we have a P E date that day. You know, he's like, no, that should be fine, this will be the end, we can have it. So, I don't know, call it what you want, but I have to always find new places, especially places and events such as this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you going to make it to your event? Or did you miss it?
It's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be walking on stage. If that's okay, because this is what it is. Thank you all.
I guess I just want to add on, if funding is, it's, yes, it's a huge number. It's an investment for our kids. Jonathan Alder, we've always, we've always done things outside the box because of that forward thinking. And we have amazing sports facilities out behind the high school because of volunteers and donations. And I just want to keep those outside the box thinking, flowing. Maybe part of the auditorium is portioned out to a developer who wants to put a certain amount of money to have their name on this section or that section or, I mean, I can give my whole list of creative developers to pay for certain. But I just want to throw that out there as another avenue in the back of our minds that maybe down the road, I don't want to put any, you know, X's on anything, but if it were to be voted down and find out that community doesn't want to put that much money towards an auditorium, maybe we pursue other, you know, avenues to finance it, so. I mean, we did amazing things with that stadium out back that, that's the power work.
So I love your idea, and I thought of that too. The other question that I had, which would be, wait for my answer, and I would be, because we're a public school, does that exempt us from any, like, national development of the arts or any kind of grants we can get to contribute to the bottom line cost of a really first-class facility? The fact that we're a public school may us out of financial or something like that?
That's a great question. I don't have much to say against the grant bill. That's certainly an opportunity. And, you know, this is something, to your point from earlier, if seating is a service, that we find these opportunities potentially to command it prior to achieving construction, that would be an opportunity as well. That's where my mind is with that.
Just my personal opinion, I don't want us to build an auditorium. I want us to build a top-notch auditorium. I don't know if you're one of the, you know, you're with, like, Yarvaskin Performing Arts Center or Joy.
Yes.
That's what I'd like to see here.
Yes.
And I don't want to rush into a decision where we limit our potential to achieve that because of the point about involving corporate owner. I don't know, no offense to the company, but any of the facility and maybe we, what's the state for the first one? That we're getting back? We have a, we know when we're getting there?
Yeah, so one of the things that, we will get that, we will get credit for the junior high. We did last campaign, we got fifty-four percent match from the state, and our community had come with forty-six percent. That percentage holds true just for the junior high. And so we don't know when, but sometime in the, in the future here, we will get, I believe it's about fourteen million dollars credit from the state and hope to come back to our district. That could be in three years, it could be in five years, it could be in nine years. And you don't know exactly when that will come up. Because it's based on how much state money goes into the capital budget each year and what it scores, all facilities and construction. But Josh, I think that's accurate, right?
You're right on target. You're entering into the expedited local partnership program. The rules of that program are that there's an expectation that they're not coming The rules of that program are that there's an expectation that they're not coming to you with an offer of funding at least for the next two years. That's a guarantee. Otherwise, they wouldn't allow you to go into L. If you're closer than two years, then they would ask you to wait and just get your offer of funding from the state. So you're at least two years away.
Yeah. I, I go, two years away from what? Getting the money from the state?
Two, two years away from an offer of funding from the state, which then would, would effectively give you your credit back for anything that you made 100% out of the expedited local partnership.
Okay. Are we ever getting $14 million?
There's no expectation that you wouldn't. You're getting ready to enter into an agreement that is binding with the state.
Okay. I still have a question. Is it?
What's that?
When do we, when is this money, when do we enter an agreement and then get the money? Does once the construction start, we enter the agreement? How, what's the order?
Yeah, the, yeah, the, the timing of the agreement, what we've asked the state to do is to wait until spring for you to enter into the expedited local partnership program. Reasoning for that is we want to recognize their cost set that's going to update in April. So after April, we then would start the process of getting into the program. That is the expedited local partnership program. Then you'll be on the commission meeting in July for that approval. And if you, you know, were successful in May, obviously you guys aren't, won't have spent any money prior to that. So you will then start your portion with the expedited program. You'll be in it at that time. And then the money that you spend throughout this master plan that we're recommending, that money is then going to your 54, 46 split with the state. And so you're building credit as you spend that money. Then when the state comes back to you for that final offer of classroom facilities assistance program, which again, we can't, we can't tell you what that timing would be. There's just no way to know because ultimately it all comes down, this is Steve described. As to when they're going to have the money available to come back to you, then you will have built up credit because you've gone through the program and you spent your money first. And so you're going to get 54% on the solution for the junior high. And then at that point in time, they're going to employ a turn around again. And if your enrollment continues to increase as we expected, well, the credit could go up higher than 14.5 million dollars. But right now, we are guaranteed if we enter into the program and we meet the requirements, we are guaranteed that 14.5, which is the 54% of what we're.
So I think you told us a while ago that we could not, when we were evaluating our options, we could not add on to or remodel the junior high without losing the ability to get that 14.5 from the state, right?
The junior high can't be considered as part of the K-12 master plan and receive credit.
Okay. So my, I pre, that's a preface to my question, which is, are there restrictions on us taking that reimbursement we will eventually get from the state of Iowa and spending it on an auditorium?
No. There are no, there are no requirements. You're going to receive a check from the state for the credit that you've got.
So we will all respect the money. So that's a reimbursement for our costs and their share of our costs.
Reason we can expect that on an auditorium?
We could. So I do think there's a way possible. Uh, that I think the way it is, if we went with that lower amount, but as part of our plan, we will build that auditorium when we get the state money. We could go to the auditorium that state money is 14 million. This auditorium is 12.5 million. It could work for us. You know, we keep the lower dollar amount for the voters and still do the auditorium.
Well, in order to get that 12 or the 14 from the state, we still need, we still need to move forward.
Right. That's exactly what, that's.
So we could move forward in May and at getting this done, what are these two things? Done and also get the auditorium. Cause I think everybody, does everybody here recognize we need an auditorium?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what about, is it possible, I wasn't here during the money raising for the field. Is it possible that during that time, we also look into private funding to build a great auditorium?
You absolutely can do that.
To add to the 14.
We can combine, we can, the 14.5 is our money and we can combine it with.
You could. I don't see why we cannot combine it with corporate money or foundation money. And the point, it comes to us, it's our money.
And can I address an earlier point for you? I was just curious. I, I wanted to reference Southern Jerome High School because their art facilities are really, really nice. And their school, they have 1,900 enrollment and their auditorium seats, 750. Um, it is a very nice auditorium. So if, like, 800 seats from my same place is an excellent place to be. Um, and if you can be out of that, it's just a dream. That's, that's not.
Well, there's an X too. Like years ago, I was covering sports, the athletic director of Ohio State told me, you have a great building when everybody who wants to get in can get in. And everybody gets in, picks a green seat, but you have empty seats that people complain about the seat. So if 800, that's human nature. So if 800 is the, is a good number for you, you're the expert on knowing, you know, what you need.
Mrs. Sossdeller?
I don't know if you really want my opinion, but I'm gonna share it. That's okay. You guys don't know me. Um, so I, I, we have this opportunity, I'm putting it on the side, I'm sorry. We have this opportunity, but we also have an expectation at this point. When I look at the growth of our district and I look at the growth of our community, what's our goal? And I, I see, yes, I see opportunity, but I am just very right now focused on the expectation. All of these families are moving out of the suburbs into our community. Yes, because it's a wonderful homely place, but they're going to still have those expectations of the auditoriums, the fitness facilities and the ensemble routes. That expectation is still going to be there. My concern is if we don't jump on this now, we will lose that community that's moving here for expectation. So I feel like 800 is a great number, but I think it's important that we understand that they're relevant of this future and this, this opportunity and expectation that we have in this community. Because if we don't provide this, we will not, I, I fully believe we will not have that community that's moving here. And that's my humble opinion, especially based on home pricing numbers. Because I live 10 minutes from here and I've been looking for five years now and we're in the district and I can't afford it. So, you know, when I see that and I think about what we can offer and what the goal is, and look at the goal of our, we, we want to be the upcoming, the rising and the amazing in town. And we can't do that without the facilities. And that's, that's where, so I think that's allowed, but. Yeah, it's, it's important. It really is. Not just for band, choir, musical. It's important for everyone in the community as a whole, especially to the image of what these people moving out here is wanting to expect from us. Thank you.
Can you, Josh, can you speak on like what exactly makes up the dollar amount for the auditorium? Like what all goes in?
Yes, um, we could get a quick little diagram just to sort of illustrate what's going to be necessary. But I think it's important to understand that there's a placement of where we're considering the auditorium as an addition. Uh, it's, it's not well suited to take advantage of the existing facilities, hallways and restrooms. And so as we're thinking about where that would be located, it's going to need its own special event entry. It's going to need its own set of restrooms. Um, it's also going to need a little bit of back house space in order to be able to get back to the existing stage and auditorium areas and, you know, tie into to using players' van. And so ultimately, there's a, you know, there's a little bit of challenge just to where we're talking about placing the addition. Um, but ultimately, you know, what we're talking about, just at a bare minimum, it's a stage, it's a fixed seating area, it's a special head lobby, a recorder to connect back in, those restrooms, um, both group restrooms and individual restrooms. That's the bare minimum.
Soundboards, lighting?
Yes. All, all technological lighting and lighting and some reinforcement that's necessary. Um, you know, we can talk about, you know, choir pit, orchestra pit, you know, press stage and all those kinds of things. You know, it's going to be everything that's necessary in order to, in the support of high school presentation. Um, and so, you know, we had a number of different examples of these that you could use and you could see sort of fit and finish. Um, but to put things in perspective, the performing arts addition, we're pricing that out right now at $650 per foot. And I know that's going to cost people some, some, uh, public gas maybe, but if you take a look at what we're doing, the rest of the building, the rest of the building is priced out at about $400 per foot. Um, it's just the performing art space is twice as tall. It's, you know, twice as much technology and sound, things that go into that. And this is a pretty good planning number that we've been able to use. Uh, it's used to do that inflation. Um, but it's just, it's a, you know, it's a higher level of quality space.
Sure. I love the specialized things.
Excellent. Yes.
Uh, I know if you have Matthew Paul, it can make the job a lot easier. But I, if I remember correctly, can you give us a, what would be a realistic timeframe that you would expect? That we might expect to get that one? I thought, I thought at one point you said probably you were thinking like four or five years. Does that sound?
I think it's reasonable, just based on where you are in the, in the, you're in this, you're in the segmented rest of, of classroom facility systems program schools. And right now, I think you're number nine or 10. Uh, and you just, you don't have any idea of how much they're going to fund that program. These, these are the programs that's funded differently. And so they're going to tackle the, the non-segmented groups, specifically have priority in them. There's, there's exceptional youth groups, other groups, they're going to get money. And we just don't have any idea of how fast it's going to move. I wish I could tell you, you know, within a two, three year period, but I just don't know. The only, the only guarantee that I know is that if you're entering into L, then the commission is expecting that you're not receiving your classroom facility assistance program funding for the next two years. Maybe that you're at least further out than two years. Otherwise, it wouldn't be considered a real program. That's the only guarantee they can have.
What's the rough construction timeline on a project like this?
Oh, the, uh, additions to the building, so if we look at A2, let's look at B actually. If we look at.
I'm sorry, auditorium?
Okay, auditorium. For the auditorium, um, if we were doing it by itself, um, it's probably six to nine months of design and about slow to 18 months of construction. So it's, you know, it could be a two year project, ready to turn around. Um, if it's in conjunction with the addition, we're doing the six, eight addition, um, that is maybe wrapped up into all of that construction and that's going to be at least two, or construction probably a good year for it.
So our question is, do we go to the voters for funding of the auditorium? Or do we use the state money to fund that?
So the other thing we need to keep in mind, I don't want, I, I really want to try to create a win win. But if we look at the history of levies being passed over the last couple of years in rural areas, but they have not been successful. It concerns me because Jonathan Alder is still electrical district. He only wants to end up passing them in urban areas or suburban areas. If I remember correctly, I don't think a rule levy is passed in the last two years of.
Renuals have passed.
Renuals have passed.
Anybody hasn't been very, it's been less than 0.5%.
And so just wanted to keep that in mind too, because it's really important that we are all in and asking this. We have to be able to pass this, uh, this year or in 2025, because we have our, obviously our, the context, we have 26. So I think it's really important that we do our best to make this work. If we can find a win win, if we can allocate those state dollars for an auditorium, I think we can keep the village down and still give the auditorium as well as the students.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we could go all in in May and get voted down and then we get nothing.
We'd have to go back to voters again.
Right. We'd have to go back, which is risky because we have a renewal. Or we go to the voters in May with the base plan and the promise that the state funding will build the auditorium. Which we don't get that state funding until we get the May levy passed.
That's correct. That's correct.
We don't get entered into that. It doesn't pass the May.
Right.
You, you could still be in the L program. It's just you're not moving forward with developing your credit because you're not spending any of your funds yet.
Two years doesn't start.
To Steve's point about win win passing the levy, I was struck, gosh, when you went over enrollment projections. My perception was that we have five or however many developments under construction. And I expect our enrollment projections to be much higher based upon, you know, my picture of that neighborhood across from Passan Park is being filled with kids in elementary school. What we're finding is that a lot of the new developments are people who had big houses in Dublin that are paying very high taxes and their kids are out of school and moving out here for the value of the house. They're eating up available housing space and they don't have kids in school. Honestly, they're going to be hard to convince the Passan levy when they don't have kids in school. So I think it's something I have to consider. Is it, the, the new, the new residents profile is not what I anticipated it would be. To the degree I anticipated, it would be young families with kids and moving out to Jonathan Alder because it's a value from to your, and to your point about they can't afford a house in Dublin anymore. So they're coming out here. I expected they were coming with two little kids who are going to be getting on a bus every day. And that's just not what the odds and numbers tell us.
And I also, I do have reservations because of the large amount of, the taxpaying constituency that has, I have a lot more of a connection with out in the rural southern half of the district. You don't vote for taxes, you know? Most of them are not going to be willing to vote for more taxes. Because they are larger property owners. They are larger homeowners, you know? And, and they're from more conservative backgrounds, you know? The claim due and the Chicana populations that fill up a lot of the area, the more like conservative, um, and I don't mean politically conservative, I mean like the Mennonite population that has historically been a lame city is still very large. And the big quadrant for me, quadrant for me is, is, you know, I don't usually ever want more taxes, but I own the school board and I know we need taxes to be able to do what we need for our kids. You know, and so I, I really, I feel, I feel like this is kind of heartbreaking for me because I know how much we need this. I, I just don't know if we can feasibly for the, the good of all of our students. Because I know that many, if not a majority, would benefit from it right now. I just don't know if we can risk not getting what we need for every single student at this point.
Well, I don't think it's a risk. I don't think it's a risk. I think it's a guarantee.
Well, it is. I just think it's, it's a matter of timeline.
Yeah, it's going to take longer.
Right.
I could say too, just from a historical perspective, Jonathan Alder, our district is dead. Just we lay extremely supportive parcels. We have passed a lot of most of our levies. And they've passed at a really good percentage, but it's because we are a fiscally conservative district. If you look at our cost per pupil ratio, it's much lower than, than all those districts around us. We've been able to offer just a great education here with a very, and still be fiscally conservative. And it's worked for our communities. We've been able to pass our, our taxes at 70%. Again, if they think this is real doable, it's just having the right plan and the right amount. And ensure that we are fiscally conservative with our, our community. And I think we can do both. I really believe we can build that auditorium and we could get this done if we, if we go to this plan.
I'm sure we can do. I don't doubt that we can.
It's really a matter of time more than a matter of if. It's a matter of when.
Well, it does matter to the community too. Like they want to know that we're being as conservative as we possibly can while also getting the most that we possibly can. And I think there's, there are the one way to do this.
There is, but the dominos have to fall in the right order. There is, but the dominos have to fall in the right order. Nothing happens with the state reimbursement unless we get it in the system. The only way we get it in the system is to start building a junior high school. The only way we do that is if we pass the levy in May.
Yeah, but either we put the auditorium on the ballot in May with everything and we get the auditorium and it passes, or it fails. Right? And if it fails at that point, then we have a real problem coming November. So I think we need to seriously, but by not putting the auditorium on the ballot or not putting the auditorium on our ballot, we're still getting the auditorium. It's just going to take, it's a timeline thing, it's going to take longer. Nobody, nobody's opposed to it on May. Like, everyone recognizes this is something we do really.
Can I say one thing? So i- if you do go that route, it'll take longer, sure. But is there a way to get messaging to the voter? Because like, what I'm looking at is here's a potential direct impact for students at the secondary level that is not necessarily as tangible in the other parts of the plans. Um, and I've seen it where like, because we think that school got a new stadium, the athletics rallied behind it. I've seen because they get a new arts facility, the art students, everything rallies behind it. So, you know, it is a tough conundrum, but like, if you do go that way, with like, how this reimbursement comes in, is there a way that voters would get the message, May means that this is for the arts? So I think we have to.
Absolutely, we part of it.
Yes, we have to.
Part of our message.
Absolutely. It has to be part of the message.
Josh, uh, can you, so, so one thing that we didn't touch on was the excess capacity that we're building into this plan. Can you touch on that? You know, based on the current projections, when you, I mean, I know after you get past 10 years, it's difficult to project, but can you talk about, you know, here we're spending, we're spending future money that we don't even have yet, uh, when would you expect that we have to look at building again after this?
Before he gets on the numbers, can I make a comment to your question?
Sure.
I, I tried my best to articulate this to the CAP towards when they were having a hard time coming up with the best plan. What is the most valuable thing to each of you, getting the plan that you want or getting more time by adding capacity, so more bait for your budget, if you will? So, I really believe, Mrs. Walker, Mr. Goto, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the, um, gaining more time and more space became very high on their value, and that's where we landed to a plan that gave this more capacity percentage.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. When, when we were in the community advisory team, we were looking at the capacity for each building, that's what everybody was focused on. And when you say time, when you're talking about it, eventually, we're going to need more buildings. Like, there will be decades that go by, we'll need to build some more, there will be more people out there. It's the time between now, the decision we make today, and when we're back at this process again. And the community advisory team was like, we want to make that time as long as possible. Like, I don't know if you guys have heard, it was sort of like, people thought, maybe Plank City Elementary, we didn't build it big enough at the time. You know, and again, I, I wasn't here for that, I don't know the reality of that, but what we don't want to have happening is build buildings that solve today's problems. We need to think about the future. These plans both put us at 80% capacity.
In ten years.
In ten years.
Based on the numbers we have today.
So that buys us time, a significant amount of time. It also frees up that state refund money to do a passionate project of an auditorium. One more thing.
Yes. Okay. But, of course, I won't go over there now, but if we were to put that off into the refund phase, that would provide us time to.
Secure part, explore partnership.
Exactly. And, and build houses, you know, we could get even more by waiting just a little bit longer. And like I said, I, I have a bunch of that happen yesterday. But if we can have more a year or two later.
Plus, you're going to the voters and you're saying, hey, vote this now. You're not only getting this plan, you're also getting an auditorium that is not coming out of your pocket for the next 37 years. Does that make sense?
Yes, it's so true.
It's so true.
That's what I say, which I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll be well retired before it happens. But my kids will, but the kids that I'm teaching now.
That's the attitude, that's a great, to have a faculty member with that attitude, which would directly benefit you sooner rather than later, which I appreciate that.
I, I guess, in, in terms of which plan, A two plus plus, or Jim, can you give us kind of a sense of when you'll be getting that information back to us, so we can kind figure that out?
We just landed this on Friday, so we're just figuring out that we have some work to do. So Josh and I have plans and lists of things we need to do, and I don't know how long that will take us to figure out.
Uh, well, the holiday coming up, it's probably going to push into junior high school, but I, you know, I would like to think that we've got two to three weeks of work, right, that we want to try to accomplish.
That's traffic management.
It is, it's, it's going to be not only, uh, not only just looking at the impacts of the possibility of the six-eight coming out to the high school site, it's also looking at what's the impact of if we go back to the junior high site and try to build there, what are the other impacts that are going to influence that site? Um, because we're going to have a large construction process, project going on at the same time as junior highs and in session, so I mean, there's a lot of different impact. I also would like an opportunity to sit with the admin teams, both for the junior high and for the high school, and talk to them a little bit more in detail about the programming of what would go into those facilities. Um, because I think there's going to be some things there that we learned that might influence some of the conversation that we have. So there's, there's a couple, three weeks or more. Um, we've also talked with our civil engineer about the possibility of doing a, a drone flight over the high school site and just kind of watching traffic. Um, they do this when they do traffic analysis. Um, and so it might tell us a little bit, um, if we can tackle that in the month of December, um, which they're still considering, if they can get somebody out there reporting into school, and we'll look at that and use that as another data point. So, so we would have that by our next board meeting, right?
In January. Not, not at the organizational meeting.
Okay. I mean, we also have the assets with the community, and I think we have that plan ready to go, ready early in the first year, to make sure that we get the resources we need and then get this passed.
I, I think the, the main thing I want to communicate is we cannot hand, uh, campaign committee to, I, I completely agree. I don't worry about, I don't worry about.
Okay, so today, we're going to be approving a dollar amount so that we can get the people we're going.
Yes.
So that we can get the bond levy on the ballot by May. And the next board meeting, we will know which of these plans is on, not the organizational meeting, the next.
The next board meeting, the board decision meeting, right, I'll have an answer before that.
Can I do?
Can we, we can have a special if we get some answers.
Okay.
Can we plan on a special the third week of the year?
Yeah, as we go, if we continue about this process, your information will still be posted at Elvate Alder, which is, everything is there. If anybody wants to go look at these plans or anything, it's all there, so it's still available. So tonight, we are deciding on whether to approve the 70, 70 million?
Basically, it's either the 82,622,500 or 70,622,500.
We have to be that precise or pick the higher of the two?
I mean, so we pick the higher of the two, even though we would be committing to Plan B over F plus? Yes, plus. That's, that would be my recommendation.
And the difference is 50,000.
Yeah, 50,000. Yeah, and that's how our bond council is currently writing up the resolutions for the special meeting next week, to go ahead and take the first votes to board to get on the levy. What they'll be doing is, I provide them the higher number, um, and then that's what the first resolution is, is to go, allow me to go to the county auditor, ask them to provide and estimate the mileage and the cost per hundred dollars for the taxpayer, and I bring that back to the board for a vote to proceed. But we want to give the auditor enough time, the holiday, and we also want to review what they give us as well for any mistakes. So if there's any mistake on that, we can have it corrected before the board moves. Which is why I sent out an email earlier today asking about availability for December 18th. And it's just going to be two measures, um, that resolution for me to proceed with the auditor, and also a resolution for all special needs, that will be exceeding our debt capacity. So it would be a file, paperwork, how to farm education workforce, and how to farm taxation. And before we go forward to lock levy, we need to provide those two state organizations all of our election processes. So we'll need to have the final vote to proceed, have it filed with the county board elections prior to, um, completing the process. And the deadline for all that is January 20th. So it's a very tight timeline, um, and I guess really, tonight, I was really trying to know is, are we going to completely cost our authority? Or yes?
Okay.
And I could have the bond council write up those plays and we get a vote on December 18th, but I just kind of like get some clear, as much clarity as possible.
I'll guarantee to the board now that you vote in favor of the dollar amount that will get us one of these junior highs and agree to the state reimbursement for the auditorium, that between myself, Carla, Tyler, and Mark, we will clearly communicate, have the auditor and make sure that, um, at the time that, uh, our community is going to make a decision on this bond issue, that they know that they're going to get that auditorium out of this junior high decision.
I think for me too, I just wanted to mention, um, well, I personally would rather have the auditorium now, sooner. I felt like it was important that we had, we had a finance committee that spent numbers of hours looking at the tax mileage and the levies and all the, all the financial aspects of it. I'm so grateful they did that, and I didn't need to be included in all that, details of all of that. Um, but they, they felt like we need to stay under the 200,000, $200 for 100,000 valuation in this community, looking at all the numbers and the, and all, all of everything, and I felt like I do want to respect the work that they did. And, uh, say, well, we really want this, let's ask for it now. And I think just the realization of that two-year timeline and not passing it and pushing us hard out, I just feel like, I don't know, for me, I don't know if it's worth it to risk.
Well, I think it's possible here to get everything we want.
I know it is.
Right, and I think that's.
Well, what I really want is that.
I agree.
But I, I'm just.
I agree, it's not always just, well, okay. Okay, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, um, the 70,622,500.
Right. 70,000.
Yep.
I think 70,000 would be faster, easier.
All right, I am going to make a motion to approve 70,622,500, um, master plan dollar amount, with the understanding that the refund money from the state will be used to build the auditorium.
I'll second that.
622 is the option.
Yes, it's the highest.
But it's the highest.
It's the higher one.
Regardless of which.
Yeah, there's a difference of 50,000 and, you know, and bonds are going level, no, $5,000 increment, so next week you might see a slightly different number because we look around here essentially. And, uh, and this is based off of tax year, this year's tax values, and by the time we get it in, well, not by December 18th, but in January, we'll know the valuation of that. So the auditor certified might be a little bit lower based on college valuation rates. We're not in reappraisal year, so I'm not expecting a huge jump. So, um, just want to give that proof base, that this is what we have to look at.
There's a motion on the table.
There's a second.
One more thing.
Yes.
Did we talk about 200 for 100,000? That's currently, as more people move into the district and that dollar amount is spread over more people, that amount will go down.
Yes.
Is that the amount?
Wait, commercial and then.
The amount, the amount is individual tax.
Person pays those down.
Yes, thank you, yeah. The board will be voting on a such dollar amount to borrow and pay back with interest over 37 years, but the individual taxpayer's share of that will decrease as valuations increase.
Well, for those of us who've been here now, it's advantageous to pass now.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, okay. Um, any further discussion? All right.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Goto?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, moving on to two quick things next, 12.05, and we need a motion to.
Who wants it?
Bill McCarthy.
This is the whole board.
I'll move it.
Roll call?
All right, um, sorry, I missed the question. I'll be on that.
Bruce.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Delwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Goto?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
I would say I appreciate the, the continuity as of, at the end of this year. Uh, PMG from Fairbanks and I will be the two most, second most tenured, although there will only be one more person, there's been a lot of turnover on the tall board, so appreciate the continuity.
Appreciate you doing this. Okay, um, and 12.06, we need to name a president pro 10 for the 2025 organizational meeting on January 13th of 2025.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just briefly, it's that we.
President, okay, and then we can talk about the next year's president. Okay.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
No, I thought.
All right, so who is, motion must be seconded. All right, is it ready?
Yep.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Goto?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Delwiler?
Okay, the next, um, school board meeting will be on January 13th, Monday, 2024, at Jonathan Alder High School, 5:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for attending today. What, did I say 2024?
It's gone there, it's gone.
So that begins to, all two months of writing down the wrong year.
I'll be back, correct it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. I can go down there. Mrs. Delwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Walk.